For joining the Dougherty County Board of Commissioners Commission Meeting. Your Dougherty County Board of Commissioners is chaired by Christopher Cohelus. Your Dougherty County Commissioners include from District One Lamar Hudgens, from District Two Victor Edwards, from District Three Clinton Johnson, from District Four Russell Gray, from District Five Gloria Gaines, and from District Six Anthony Jones. We are also joined by County Administrator Michael McCoy, Assistant County Administrator Scott Addison, County Clerk Juwan Ware, and County Attorney Spencer Lee. This is your Dougherty County Board of Commissioners Commission Meeting.
All right, good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call to order the Dougherty County Commission Regular Meeting for June 15th, 2020. I'll begin with the roll call. Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Gray?
I'm here.
Commissioner Gaines?
I'm here, thank you.
Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones?
Present.
All right, very good. Uh, let me circle back to Commissioner Edwards. Is Commissioner Edwards on? Okay, all right, the clerk will mark, um, Commissioner Hudson, Johnson, Gray, Gaines, Jones, and Chairman Cohelus is present. Commissioner Edwards is absent. We'll begin with the invocation and the pledge. Everyone, please bow your heads. To Heavenly Father, thank you for this time that we have to come together for the citizens of Dougherty County, do good and hard work for them, to bestow upon them the resources that they need in a manner that is most judicious and, and most contemplative of the needs that they have and the manner in which they need to receive it. Please bless this community and thank you for your healing hand that you have placed on this community during very trying times. In Christ's name we pray, amen. If everyone would withstand the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America,
All right, the first item of business, consider for action the approval of the June 1st regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Campbell.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Jones. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Gray.
Second from Commissioner Gray. All right, um, any comments, questions, or discussions? To be known, we'll call about for vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021 budgets. Uh, if you were interested in speaking in reference to the budgets, please report to the Governor and Senator by 9:45 and sign the signing sheet provided. Um, Mr. McCoy, did we have anyone sign in? Okay, um, Commissioner Hudson, you just showed me the sign-in sheet that was publicly advertised, I believe, uh, and, uh, we did not have anyone that signed in. We'll make sure that's part of the record. We'll now move on. The public hearing is closed on the fiscal year 2021 budget. We'll move on to delegations. This is where the commission will hear comments on those items pertaining to Dougherty County, for which the public hearing has not been held and scheduled. We ask everyone to be brief, to the point, and consider this time for others. And this morning, I'm pleased, uh, to have an update from Dana Glass, who is the CEO, President of Providing an Update on the Aspire Behavioral Health and Developmental Disability Services. Good morning, Ms. Glass.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us time on your busy agenda. I know you guys have a lot to do. Um, I wanted to take just a minute and just tell you a little bit about, um, the services that we've been providing here in Dougherty County. Um, Aspire Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities is what's considered your safety net provider. And what that means is, is that we are tasked with serving those who are uninsured or underinsured. Um, we serve an eight-county area in rural southwest Georgia and have served about 10,000 people each fiscal year. Here in Dougherty County in particular, um, from July 1, 2019 through May 31, 2020, our fiscal year will not end until June 30th, so we have another month of data, um, that I can provide you at a later, uh, time once this month closes out. But we have, uh, served, uh, 5,300 Dougherty County residents. Fifty-five percent of those have been male, 45% female. We served an additional 70 in elderly and developmentally disabled adults through a combination of day services and residential, um, support. Uh, we have a split between about 70% of our service delivery going to adults and 30% going to children. Um, we do provide a complete continuum of care from a very high-level intensity, um, care that's provided through our Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which is 24/7 walk-in access-to-care, um, group, individual family therapies. We provide day treatment, residential services. We're in the schools. Um, we have an after-school program. Uh, we do supportive employment. We do medication-assisted treatment and therapy, um, all the way to just basic case management and medication management services. Um, 68% of the individuals that we serve are African-American and 30% are Caucasian. Our largest age group is that 18 to 40, with 36% of our population falling into that age group, and again, 30% are 17 or below. Um, from July until May, 70% of our appointments have been kept here in Dougherty County, uh, which means that we've been very busy and we're proud to say that we have provided over 82,000 episodes of direct care to Dougherty County residents. Um, we also maintain full operations throughout this pandemic. We essentially, uh, within a matter of days, turned our system on its head and went from complete, um, in, in clinic face-to-face or in community face-to-face care to 70% of our services being delivered through telehealth, uh, without any interruption to care or service delivery, even though it looked a little different. Another program that we provide here, um, and operate here in Albany is the Change Center. It's an addiction support recovery center. Um, this, through this program, um, we have been the first one in southwest Georgia. There's a couple other that have popped up at this point, but it's 100% peer-led with individuals that are in long-term recovery from substance use disorders. We have served over 2,200 individuals in this community through that program and provided, um, almost 13,000 recovery support services. That's in addition to the 82,000, um, clinical care services that we have provided. We're also a good, strong employer here. Um, we have 375 full and part-time employees, um, 190 of which reside here in Dougherty County. Um, close to 10% of our total employees are in long-term recovery from a behavioral health or substance use disorder, so they're bringing that experience, strength, hope, that lived experience, um, to the table to help people recover. Um, and I'm sure you've heard at this point now that, uh, state agencies have been asked to cut 11% of their budget. And while we're not a state agency, our primary funder is. The Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities contracts with us to be your safety net provider, um, and 23 other community service boards statewide, that we are your local provider. Um, and what we know is that now is not the time to cut service delivery. Uh, while the department did a really good job of trying to avoid, uh, impact to direct care, um, there's no way that, you know, with a, that, a cut that size, that you're going to come out without impact to direct care. Um, and on the heels of a, of a pandemic, we are certainly facing, um, a mental health crisis. Any exposure to multiple and prolonged stressors is going to have a negative impact to health and wellness. We've certainly had that as a collective community. Um, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about the future and fear of illness, um, you know, job and financial loss. Uh, our essential and frontline workers have experienced trauma throughout this. Um, and what that adds up to is increased depression and anxiety. We also know on the heels of a crisis like this, um, and a recession, that there's generally an increase in deaths of despair, which are deaths due to drugs, alcohol, and suicide. Um, you know, so as a community, now more than ever, it's important that we come together to promote, protect, and care for those individuals that need mental health services and that we ensure that there's accessibility to quality health care, um, for these individuals that need some assistance, um, and that we're investing in building our mental health resources, um, not cutting those resources at this point. Um, while we don't know at this, at, at this exact moment exactly what it's going to look like for Aspire, you know, we remain committed to providing services for those most in need, um, in the local communities that we serve. Um, you know, and we just would appreciate any commitment, um, from our local agencies and stakeholders, you know, to help us advocate, you know, for maintaining the system as a whole with services, um, statewide. Um, and then any investment that's available to make in our agency locally, we certainly appreciate. And, um, I do appreciate your time and I appreciate all of your commitment and energy that has gone into keeping this community safe throughout this, uh, certainly cri- large crisis that we have experienced. So, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that now.
Thank you, Ms. Glass. We truly appreciate, uh, your hard work in the, in the, in this community and, and I've had the opportunity to visit the Change Center, which is obviously a, a great community asset that helps people find a road to, uh, sobriety and, and functionality in this community. And just, um, I, I don't have any questions for you. I'd, I'd certainly wish you and Aspire the, the best, um, best of luck during very trying budget times, uh, as everyone is sort of staring down the barrel of, of some very significant cuts that are coming from the state. Uh, we do know that these resources that you have provided and that Aspire has provided in this community, especially following the 2017 disasters, 2018 disaster, and, and now a pandemic are all too critical to this community. But, uh, I'll open, I just want to say thank you, and I'll open, uh, the floor to any questions from my fellow commissioners.
I've got a question. Uh, this is Commissioner Gray. Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Ms. Glass, for, uh, everything you guys are doing during this, this time. I know it's, uh, such a, an overlooked community asset to have, uh, this, this infrastructure for behavioral health, uh, you know, supporting our, our community, uh, in, in this, uh, marginalized population. Just like most of healthcare, uh, with the, the pandemic, you, you flipped to, uh, some telehealth and, and virtual services to continue to expand, uh, and, and keep connectivity, uh, with your, with your patient base. Has, um, has that broadened the number of new patients that have reached out to you because of that, uh, I guess, channel of, of outreach? And, and if so, um, is this something you plan on incorporating into your, uh, service delivery model moving forward? Are you going to kind of keep the telehealth resources or are you going to scrap it and get back to face-to-face?
So, um, that's kind of a complicated question to answer. Um, from our perspective, what we were allowed to do pre-pandemic, um, did not include a lot of telehealth services for the majority of our, of our, um, clinical programming. Only our physicians were able to do telehealth services until this hit. And when it hit, the state worked very hard to kind of flip. And we're allowed to continue the telehealth services and get reimbursed for it, um, until the federal, um, emergency ends. And so there's not an end date in sight for that. But what we are doing is, is kind of a hybrid at this point. Um, we have started slowly bringing people back to the clinic, um, while maintaining safe social distancing, um, having groups of less than 10 onsite. Um, we did provide group services via telehealth. It's just, um, there's something to be said for that face-to-face connection, but we will do as much as we are allowed to do. I guess that's the simple answer. Um, we just don't know what that's going to look like from a federal and state perspective, yes. We are advocating for that because it will increase access, certainly.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Um, honor, honor. Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir. I want to come in. I want to comment on, on what Commissioner Gray was saying, uh, about the access. I think that is a, a wonderful, uh, attribute to have because that stigmatism of going down to the place can kind of steer some folks from wanting to be seen or going to aspire or going to their buildings. And so to be able to privately connect to services from their home, um, I think it could really, really make a big difference. So, that telehealth, if there's ways to continue with, I think you should, in my opinion, because it just gives more access to, you know, to, to your services.
Well, we certainly.
And thank you for your hard work.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. And we certainly, you know, we, we are advocating for that. I'm actually on a committee with the Georgia Community, um, Service Board Association that is advocating with the DCH and the Department of Behavioral Health to advocate for expanded, um, allowances moving forward. Um, you know, certainly in a rural area such as ours, you know, Albany is the only one that has a public transport system of the eight primary counties that we serve, and then we serve an additional 12, um, through specialty contracts. So, transportation is certainly a barrier to service delivery, um, even though we have, um, offices in all of those locations, um, but it's certainly a challenge. So, we recognize that and will continue to advocate for that as a method to care.
Um, Ms. Glass, a, a couple, uh, follow-up comments and questions. Um, what percentage of Aspire's budget is comprised of state funding?
The majority of our budget is comprised of state funding. We have, uh, what's about 50% of state funding and about 45% of Medicaid/Medicare, which is that underinsured population. Um, we do accept insurance, um, you know, but it's a very, um, small piece of our financials.
Right. Um, secondarily, in, in, just sort of on a related topic, I had gotten some correspondence from, uh, one of, um, one of the members of the Dougherty County Judiciary, uh, Judge Darasaw, who oversees Dougherty County's, uh, Drug Treatment and Mental Health Court, which I believe Aspire provides some, uh, services with respect to that. Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And are you familiar, are you familiar with the, the proposed budget cuts that, uh, the Department of Behavioral Health has submitted to OPB, um, which actually eliminates certain, would, would effectively eliminate certain positions that are necessary to staff the Drug Treatment and Mental Health Court?
I have seen the proposal, but I have not received direct communication from the department as, as a contract, um, in a contract format, that I have seen the proposal.
Okay. So, it, it just as an FYI, um, for everyone, I'm, I'm sure, I'm probably repeating information that most everyone knows, but, uh, Dougherty County was the first to have a Drug Treatment and Mental Health Court of its kind in the state of Georgia. It's actually nationally recognized. And most recently, um, uh, the, um, our, our late, our late and beloved, uh, Judge Goss, uh, was, who was the pioneer for our Drug Treatment and Mental Health Court, was recently recognized, I believe, by, um, the national organization that oversees these types of developments, uh, and was actually inducted into their Hall of Fame, uh, for being a pioneer in that field. It is, uh, very much a necessary, uh, resource that we have here in the community and, and prevents a, a cycle of, of readmissions and, and rejailing of people that truly need, uh, mental health services and, and drug monitoring and, um, anyways, as, as a result of the discussion that I had with Judge Darasaw, as an FYI to everyone, I did connect her with Cornerstone, uh, on that issue of, uh, the Department of Behavioral Health's, uh, budget submission. I do not know, um, obviously we, I expressed to Cornerstone that that was a resource that we do not want to lose here in this community. Um, I will certainly give an update to everyone as we get information on that, but Judge Darasaw was very concerned, uh, and obviously that is a, a county function that is vitally important to this community. So, I, I just thought that this was an opportune time to, to update everyone. That developed, I believe, last week, um, and, uh, wanted to, I want to thank Cornerstone for being able to, uh, to pivot very quickly and listen to our needs, so, uh, thank you.
It's absolutely a vital program, and we've seen some really significant success for individuals that complete that program successfully. Um, they go, about 70% go on to have part-time or full-time employment, um, or education. Um, very few re-offenders. It, it's really an outstanding, uh, program in terms of outcomes. We've hired multiple individuals from that court to work with us.
Ms. Glass, what's the dollar value of the, um, proposed state cuts to your budget?
I, I don't know about my budget in particular yet, um, but it's 172 million statewide. Um, and it's for all of our service organizations that, that do the behavioral health services. So, it's significant.
That's, that's the Department of Behavioral Health's, um, overall bottom line, what they have to cut from all services?
Yes.
Okay, and that's.
And they, they are actually on a gag order from the governor and not able to discuss directly with us, so we're flying a little bit blind here in all honesty, um, about what it may look like. We only have the proposal, um, as it went to the Health and Human Services Committee.
I understand. Uh, so at this point, it's still notional, uh, until, uh, yeah, pardon the expression, until the sausage is made, uh, going through, going through budget hearings. Okay, very well. Thank you very much, Ms. Glass. I appreciate your, your comments and information and, and wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. Next, um, any other delegations, uh, that, uh, that did not previously sign up and that wish to be heard? They're being known, we'll move on. Consider for action the resolution providing for the acceptance and execution of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs 2020 Community Home Investment Program, State Recipient Grant Agreement, in the amount of $300,000 in the memorandum of agreement between Dougherty County, Georgia and the Southwest Georgia Regional Commission as it pertains to the implementation of the 2020 chip program. The commission approved the grant application on October 20th, 21st, 2019. Mr. McCoy?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we're recommending approval. We're very excited about this, uh, grant program. We received it a few years ago. Uh, there was a gap, uh, and we were able to reapply recently and awarded this grant, uh, to help, uh, folks in our community that are low to moderate income that need their homes rehabilitated, which helps our tax base by having, uh, improved homes in our community. Uh, we, uh, were awarded about $300,000, of course, to Southwest Georgia, you know, Commission, administers this program. We paid them about $10,000 over a two-year period. This grant will, um, go into effect August 1st, 2020 and end July 31st, 2022. Uh, again, we, uh, recommend approval.
All right, very good. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Campbell.
All right, I got a motion. Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion?
One question, please. This is Gloria. Uh, is that a 100%, uh, grant?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It's, it's not a, a reimbursement, uh, just like it was the last time. I think we were able to help, uh, between seven and eight, uh, families.
What do you mean, not a reimbursement?
Meaning that we don't pay first and then get reimbursed on the back end.
Yeah, but my question was, just like the one below, whether or not it is a 100% grant with no local mass?
No local mass.
Okay.
All right, uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. I have a quick question. Um, Mr. McCoy, how would this affect, uh, the CDBGDR, uh, single-family home program? If a person applies through this program, are they still eligible to, for, for that program from, that you're standing up to?
So, the difference between these programs is that, uh, one, you have to show that you have damage relative to the tornado. This doesn't have that stipulation. Anybody can, can apply. It doesn't matter how your, your house fell in disrepair. But with the CDBGDR, that is, uh, to damage relative to the, uh, tornado.
Yes, sir. But my question is, uh, if I, if I, if I qualify for one, does it disquali- does it disqualify me from another?
So, assuming that.
So, uh, assuming that you, uh, live in the, uh, area code for the CDBGDR, uh-
Mm-hmm.
Conceptually, you would be eligible for both, but, uh, well, uh, but the problem is with the CDBGDR, you, you can't have a duplication of benefits. So if somebody is trying to get money from both programs, they're likely going to be denied, for sure.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, we'll call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, consider for action the recommendation to accept the U.S. Department of Justice grant in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight dollars and allow the county administrator to execute related documents for the award. This is a one-hundred percent grant with no local match in his direct allocation from the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program. This funding is related to the CARES Act that allows for a variety of purchases to be made. Mr. McCoy?
Uh, yes, sir. The chairman, we're recommending approval. Um, the funding is for making purchases, um, that, uh, include, but are not limited to overtime, equipment, include law enforcement, medical personnel, protective equipment, hiring supplies such as gloves, masks, sanitizers, training, travel expenses, and addressing the medical needs of inmates, uh, at the local jails and detention centers. So as you can see, this is very broad. We've had, um, approaching three hundred thousand dollars in additional, uh, spend relative to the COVID-nineteen, um, pandemic response. Um, and we are also eligible for reimbursement through FEMA for, uh, category B, which all of this falls into. And, uh, we're very grateful to have, uh, gotten this grant, uh, from the Department of Justice to help us with these, uh, additional unexpected expenses.
Is there a motion?
No move.
All right, motion from, uh, Commissioner Hudgens, second from Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? They're being known, we'll call them out for a vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, continued discussion and presentations for the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Mr. McCoy and Ms. Henley will address.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Um, have, hopefully you all have, uh, gotten a chance to look in your inbox. I sent you a copy of the documents that we'll be referencing. Um, it was sent under, uh, proposed, uh, budget changes. Did anyone not receive that? All right, assuming you did, uh, we will take a look at what we're recommending since our, uh, June first meeting. And, uh, basically with the general fund, we're recommending two hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars in additional spend. One is for facilities management. We need three custodians. At the June first meeting, we heard from Chief Justice Lockett, uh, and the new coronavirus guidelines for when the courts reopen, they'll need, uh, cleaning after each use. And we do not have the, uh, staff currently to meet that service, uh, demand. And so we're going to need three new custodians as well as, uh, additional supply, uh, to make sure that that space, uh, stays as safe as possible. So that's a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And then, uh, our next recommendation is an additional hundred thousand dollars to implement a pay increase, uh, to lift, uh, those in our organizations, uh, that are making below, uh, ten dollars an hour. So this would set a floor of about ten dollars and fifty cents per hour, uh, which we think, uh, is a, is a great improvement over where we are and have been, uh, in the past. Uh, a lot of these, uh, employees have been frontline essential workers who have, uh, put themselves at risk day in and day out, uh, during this pandemic. Uh, and so we're recommending, uh, getting them above, uh, ten dollars and fifty-eight cents, I'm sorry, ten dollars and fifty cents per hour. Uh, we have currently about forty-six employees that make less than ten dollars and fifty cents per hour. Um, and there will be approximately, uh, seventy-eight employees, uh, affected by this pay adjustment. Um, all right, so that's the general fund, two hundred and eight thousand dollars more than what we requested during our last meeting. Uh, the solid waste enterprise fund, uh, we're requ, to implement this, uh, budget, I'm sorry, this pay adjustment to ten fifty, we'll be about nine thousand, one hundred and ten dollars more in the solid waste enterprise fund. The, uh, next page, the grants fund, uh, we added the CHIP grant since our last meeting. We got approval for that, but you'll see that under, uh, the three hundred and, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. And then the library, uh, this is a, uh, an accounting requirement. Uh, we get a, a state grant for the library, uh, for a couple of employees. And so there were adjustments to the grant fund of about five hundred, uh, thousand dollars. And Martha?
Just three hundred thousand of the CHIP.
Three hundred thousand, yes.
Okay, yeah, that's it.
All right, and so, uh, our proposed, uh, budget total will, with these, uh, recommended increases, will go from sixty-nine point eight million dollars to seventy point nine million dollars. And so today we're coming to you to request a budget of, a total budget of seventy million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So with the general fund, I want to mention that, uh, contingency would go from, like, five, yeah, five point eight million dollars to six million dollars. And so that's what we really, that's what we started with, uh, with the finance committee. Uh, so we're right back at six, six million dollars.
And, thank you, Mr. McCoy. The biggest point I want to make out on the last page of the handout is the biggest increases in the grants fund and all that's grant money. It's not, it's not local property tax money. So we increased the grants fund by eight hundred and ten thousand, but it's because we got grants. So the one and a half percent budget increase is, uh, overstated by that amount. Really, the increase is less than, less than-
One percent.
Less than one percent, yes. So I just want to make that point.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Anything else, Mr. McCoy?
Uh-
Yes, Commissioner Gaines?
So, Mr. McCoy, uh, and, and this is, this has a tone of, a, a little bit of sarcasm, but also just, uh, foreshadowing. Uh, we just spent twenty-five thousand dollars to install an ionizer in the same building. We're going to hire, uh, you know, three new custodians to do the job. You know, we're not getting any type of discount on, uh, on that investment because it's, uh, we're still having to meet federal guidelines with, uh, respect to the number of people and the frequency with which it has to be sanitized. And so, you know, that twenty-five thousand dollars would, uh, be nice to have been able to put towards this line item increase. Um, so I'll, I'll just make in a statement and I'll leave it at that.
All right, any other comments, questions, discussion? Commissioner Gaines?
Yes, please. Um, I'm looking at our revenues, and in the original budget, we were, um, I suppose, down by eleven percent. Is that correct? No? Over last year. How, how, how much were we down in the original budget over, over this year? In revenue?
In the general-
So, um, it, the-
Yeah, in the general fund.
So the-
Five point six percent. Five point six percent.
So the, the approved budget, Commissioner Gaines, was forty-nine million and seven.
Right.
And, um, the actual is expected to be forty-nine million four.
Five point six.
So it's five point six percent decrease. So we, 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 we think we're going to bring in about two hundred thousand dollars less than we projected in the general fund.
Mm-hmm. So, uh, the fund balance then is, um, the hit on the fund balance is over a hundred percent, huh, to make up that difference?
So, uh, the budget that was adopted had a two million, eight hundred thousand dollars expended to our fund balance. We're expecting to only spend a million one of it, a million one thirty-eight.
So we're, we're down, we're down about a hundred and seven percent, or rather, increase of a hundred and seven percent hit on the, on the fund balance?
Well, uh, to our good, we, 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 we are spending, um, we're saving a hundred and seven percent of what we had budgeted of fund balance. That, that hundred and seven percent is a positive, that instead of spending two million eight, we're only going to spend a million one of it. Does that make sense?
Right. Yeah, it does, but, uh, we're still depending on, uh, how much, eleven percent from the fund balance?
Um, yes, ma'am.
The balance is stated.
Yes, ma'am, for, for estimated twenty twenty. It would have been better than that, um, except for COVID-nineteen in March, April, and May and June collections. And so whenever y'all do your budget, Martha and Michael are, you know, carrying on the tradition that y'all always had, overestimate expenses, you underestimate revenues. So when we budget that two million eight, we didn't actually expect that we'd spend it all. We hoped we'd, uh, have a little bit of a profit. But because COVID hit, we're going to wind up spending a million one of it. So this budget coming up, you have a projected expenditure to our fund balance of six million, but that's again because of the conservative projections on revenues and expenses. Under no circumstance do I think you'll wind up spending six million.
And we have the ability to pivot midstream and adjust our budget-
Month to month.
On a, on a forward basis. And I think that, um, it's a, a good example of us sort of planning for the worst, um, and being in, being in a position to pivot back towards, uh, I'm not going to say towards the best, but pivot back towards progress.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, but there really are no guarantees at all whatsoever. We have no idea what's to come.
No, I think that's a very fair point, Commissioner Gaines. Um, but what we do know is, um, the iteration of where we were at under COVID-nineteen, which was under a, essentially a complete shutdown and shelter in place, certainly has a far more drastic impact on our revenues than where we will be on a forward-moving basis where we at least have, um, more, um, more, more commerce taking place. I, I think it's a very fair point, um, but obviously we are hopeful, um, that as people are becoming more comfortable and moving about and conducting commerce, that that will have an exponential, um, mitigate, mitigating impact to the overall loss of revenue.
Yeah.
Come in.
I suppose the bottom line for me is that, uh, we cannot, um, continue this level of, um, fund balance decrease.
Yep, that's correct.
I think that's a very fair point. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. Uh, I, I just wanted to tip my hat to the finance committee and Mr. McCoy and, uh, Martha and Mr. Walls, uh, navigating through all of, all of what we've been facing, uh, over, over these last few years. And things are not being as bad as they could have been. And I just wanted to say thank, thank, thanks to, to that group for that hard work.
Chairman Hudgens? Very good. Yes.
Come in, come in, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, I want to, I want to salute the, uh, finance committee and Mr. Walls and Mr. McCoy. I want to, because here's where I am. I'm like my granddaddy used to say, I, I know everything's not all that good, but I tell you what, it's better to have money and, and need it and not, and to not have it and, and don't have it. It's better to have the needed and have it and don't. That's a tough deal to be in. So I think we're in a good position right here.
Uh, one more question, please?
Yes, Commissioner Gaines, please.
Um, the voluntary, uh, pilot from CB is, it disappeared? We're not going to have it at all?
Strictly voluntary.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's voluntary, uh, and so we don't know, uh, at this time, uh, just like last year, uh, we, we didn't know. And so, uh, we will, uh, get a determination and follow up with you. But we, we, we-
And may I add, may I add a point to that, too?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, there, and I, and I want to also say that, that last year, uh, there was a, a lot of outreach from independent commissioners, uh, to, to, towards FIBI, and they were very receptive, uh, to, to, uh, keeping their promise with the B pilot. So I, I, I look forward to them, you know, doing, doing that again.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, in, in response to, uh, the, uh, question raised about the amount of fund balance of six million dollars, uh, the intent was to minimize any type of adverse effects on, uh, employees, uh, as well as service to the citizen. Um, because we have a, a fund balance, uh, we're able to avert having to implement very draconian, uh, measures. Uh, I did send you all last week, and we discussed it at our last meeting, scenarios to reduce the general fund budget. So if this body decided that it didn't want to budget the six million dollars, which we do have on hand, um, you could implement these, uh, reduction measures, which would be nine unpaid holidays. That would reduce the budget by eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. We could cut pay by two point five percent at seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We could cut pay by five percent, one point four million dollars in savings. Uh, ten percent salary reduction, uh, two point eight million dollars. And then, of course, if you, uh, combine those, um, you know, ten, ten percent salary increase, um, as well as the nine unpaid holidays, you could potentially, uh, reduce the fund balance spend by three point seven million dollars. So those are options. That's not what staff is recommending, uh, because we feel that because of the decisions that you all made a few years ago to raise the mileage rate, to put the fund balance in a stronger position than it was previously, we're at this juncture, uh, that we need this, these resources. And so we have the resources on hand, and so we're recommending to use those resources if necessary with the understanding that we strongly believe, based on the information that we have, uh, that we will not, uh, use the six million dollars. But we will monitor this monthly. We'll come back to you, uh, in October with a budget amendment, uh, and at that time, we may need to take, uh, different, uh, actions. But, uh, today, we're recommending, uh, the budget that we put in front of you with a six, uh, six million dollar, um, transfer from reserves to make up the budget shortfall between revenue and, uh, expenses.
Uh, come in, come in.
Yes, Commissioner-
Uh, you know, I would never sit here and be a part of any balancing the books on the backs of the employees. We just, we just raised, and I, I, I just hate to even think of that thought, but I'm, I thank Mr. McCoy for showing us that. But like I said, I never do that. And we just gave the least among us a, a, a raise to get them up to ten dollars an hour. And if you go back and cut their pay, golly, what do you think they'll be making? Five dollars an hour? So that's just, we're, we're not going to even think about that.
Uh, but it, but it does raise the question, though, um, going forward, if worst-case scenario, uh, if we start to draw on our reserves so much, then what, the only option would be a tax increase?
Yeah. Well, I think we need to take this thing one step at a time. I mean, we're trying to look into a crystal ball here to dig something. This is how- This is hypothesis, which is an educated guess. I don't think we need to deal with educated guesses right now. I think we just need to deal with the facts.
Well, that's, that is what this is, an educated guess. That's what the budget is. Anyway-
But it's the fact of this time.
I think that, I think these are all fair points, and I think that the finance committee's done a good job at making an interim recommendation based on the best information that we have available. Obviously, we, we pray for better-case scenarios as opposed to worst-case scenarios, and if we, unfortunately, God forbid, approach a worst-case scenario, then we will pivot and get recommendations for everyone. I want to thank everybody for their thoughtful questions, comments, and discussion on, on this. I also want to echo my fellow commissioners in thanking the finance committee and staff for presenting us with options that demonstrate what we, what we can do. I also want to thank this commission for its foresight in, during, making a tough decision several years ago to make sure that we were in a position to have enough money in our pocketbook to weather, to weather another bad storm, and I think that that has served us very well. And with that being said, if there's nothing further on the budget, I'm going to close discussions on the budget and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have five Mondays in June. There will be no meeting next Monday, June 22nd. Next meeting will be June 29th, my birthday, and I'll be calling in, and you'll be voting on the budget.
All right, very good. We wish, we wish Mr. McCoy a happy 22nd birthday. And, Mr. Lee, do you have anything, Mr. Lee?
Not to Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gaines?
Uh, please, the thought occurred to me when we mentioned Judge Goss and-
Yes, ma'am.
Now Judge Stevenson, if it's appropriate for the commission to recognize the judges in any way.
I agree with that 1,000%. And honestly, had, had, had had some preliminary discussions about that with Mr. McCoy, and then the, the COVID-19 pandemic sort of absorbed, I think, a lot of our energy, but I think that's an excellent point. And I believe, I believe that a painting has been commissioned and completed with respect to Judge Goss, and I'm not sure with respect to Ms. Stevenson or Judge Stevenson, but I think that that is a very good point, and I will direct Mr. McCoy to begin work on that. Thank you, Commissioner Gaines. It's very thoughtful and frugal point. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Gaines?
And that's it, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Johnson?
Um, no, sir. I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Gray?
Nothing further at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, uh, yes, uh, just, just a few, just a few comments, and, you know, we're going through some tough times. I just have to ask, when will the killing of black men and women stop? That's what, you know, it's just by some white police cop. This is ridiculous. Another Saturday night in Atlanta, deja vu all over again. Another trigger happened. Policeman declared hunting season on a black man, Rashad Brooks. He was 27 years old, father of four, died in, died in a Wendy's parking lot. Did he deserve the death? No, he didn't. But thanks, thanks for, thank God for surveillance cameras. Back in the Wild West, back, back in those days, the two worst cardinal sins were stealing a horse and shooting a man in the back. When you steal a horse, you were hung. When you shot a man in the back, you were hung and also ostracized by the town as a back shooter. Most of my friends are deer hunters. I'm not a deer hunter, but they do deer hunt. And one day, a deer appeared, and I happened to be in the woods with one of my friends, and the deer poked his head out. I said, there he is, shoot him. He said, I can't shoot him. I have to shoot him in the side. That's a good shot. If he turns and runs, you know, they said, let's get him next time. We'll get him next time. Why didn't the officer, why, why didn't this police officer let Rashad Brooks go and pick him up at a later date? They knew who he was. He wasn't wanted for anything. He, he broke the law by trying to get away. When I saw George Floyd murdered on TV, I, you know, I thought I'd seen it all. Now Freeman, when does this nonsense of murdering stop? When will it stop? When will it all end? Why do some men die? Men die for a lot of reasons. Some not worthy of war. A, a, a black man murdered by a policeman, knee on his neck. A black woman murdered by a policeman with a no-knock warrant at the wrong apartment. A black man shot in the back running from a traffic stop. A black man trapped and killed like a feral hog while jogging through the wrong neighborhood. These people, these people die for fools' reason. Why? Because of the color of their skin. In today's society, some folk, you know, with some folks in today's society, money is short and common sense is trading at an all-time low. To let, to let these folks die is a waste. Black lives matters, folks. All lives matter. Let's, let's wake up. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Hodgens, do you have anything? Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, though. All right, and just a few brief announcements. Government buildings will be reopening June 22nd, and the court system will be opening July 12th. We are-